Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Ms. Maturney.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Here.
Mr. Low.
Here.
All right, thank you. Before we really kick things off here, I just want to thank everyone for coming out this evening to the Perrysburg City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting regarding the presentation of the Land Use Plan. Before we jump into the meeting, I would like to mention a few things about what this meeting is and what to expect from this meeting. As this is a committee of the whole meeting and not a regular council meeting, City Council cannot take any action on passing any legislation. I know that there were some rumors that council be making a decision this evening. I would like to clear up that council cannot make a decision on passing the Land Use Plan or any legislation for that matter at a committee of the whole meeting. I'd also like to point out the Land Use Plan is not on the agenda as a potential legislation item at tonight's council meeting that will follow this committee of the whole and the most likely meeting will be on to Planning Zone Committee for several reviews as well. As such, council will not be voting on nor discussing this Land Use Plan at the 6:30 PM council meeting. I know many of you are here regarding one portion of the Land Use Plan. Tonight, we'll be focused on listening to the entire plan itself with the presentation. So I'd also like to point out that a few things as well that I believe to be true for the concern that most of you are here for. If any council member would like to object to anything I have to say, please do so. First, I'd just like to say that as far as I'm aware, the city of Perrysburg has no plans to annex the Perrysburg Heights community into the city as a result of this Land Use Plan. The city of Perrysburg will not and cannot use eminent domain to take any homes in order to tear down to create a park. The city of Perrysburg will not be forcing zoning changes onto the properties within the Perrysburg Heights community. And one other thing I'd like to make mention as well regarding public comments, we did have a list, which is right here, that was up at the podium to sign in to speak. And if council agrees, I would like to limit any public comment to two minutes for those who have signed up to speak due to the time constraints with the city council meeting that is following immediately thereafter. Hearing no objections to that time limit, we will proceed forward with that. And the public comment section will come after the presentation and the Q and A session with council, the administration, the consultants. So after we hear from our consultants and have the Q and A between us and the consultants, we will allow some time for public comment, but again, a two-minute time limit. So with that, I'll pass the podium over to Brody to do the introduction here.
Brody was rescuing the other consultant.
So, thank you, Brody.
All right, thank you, council members. Just walking in, I just wanted to make a quick introduction. We have our consultants here this evening that helped formulate this Land Use Plan. We have Mr. Aaron Dominey of OHM Advisors and also Mr. Tim Bachbreyter, who will be going over some of the case studies with you tonight. So I didn't catch your full introduction here, but it sounded like you had that handled fairly well. So I do want to invite them and make sure we're using efficient use of your time, so we'd like to get started right away. We're going to spend about somewhere between 30 and 40 minutes doing a presentation and then engaging city council with questions that you have of the consultants to clarify things. I just want to reemphasize, I'm sure you covered this, Jonathan, with your report, but we will not be asking for any approvals this evening. There will be additional steps in the future. Back to the Planning and Zoning Committee of Council of probably at least two meetings, and if it takes longer than that, we're certainly open to that. So those will be more of the working sessions. So with that in mind, we invite you to sit back and listen to the presentation by the consultants. And if you have questions as we go or at the end, we'd be happy to answer those. So with that, I'll introduce Aaron Dominey.
Thank you, Brody. Permission to counsel, I'm going to present without this because it's quite a lengthy presentation. Well, thank you for having me, to meet with you all again. As many of you I've seen through the duration of this process, some of you are in our steering committee, others participated in other ways, so it's good to be back here. My name is Aaron Dominey. I am a principal and partner with OHM Advisors, former Perrysburg High School graduate, former Perrysburg resident. Took a lot of honor and pride in working with you all on this important project and had the opportunity when I was a younger professional working on the last one. So good to be back and helping you put this document together. As Jonathan mentioned, this is really going to be the story of the whole plan. So I'm going to go through, starting at the beginning, kind of what is the plan as a grounding point for us and how is it to be used? How do we create the plan? What are the inputs that went into this? And I'll talk about some of the highlights and recommendations within the plan. Obviously, it's a long document, and we've spent a year working on this, so to condense this down into about 35, 40 minutes is a task. So bear with me, and I'm going to go through this. And then when I get about two-thirds of the way through, I want to turn it over to Tim, who was with the Edge Group that worked with us on this. So this is your full team. It was OHM, the Edge Group, and Aimpoint Research. Aimpoint Research is a market research firm. They helped us with statistically valid polling, which I'll explain how that was part of this as well when I get into the presentation. So what is the purpose of this project? There's a nice statement up there. You're welcome to read it as I'm talking, but in very simple terms, what we are doing is creating a blueprint for the city. Can't build a house without a set of plans. You can't build a city without a blueprint and a set of plans. And this is one of the two key policy documents that the city has to make informed decisions related to growth and development. The plan is one. Ohio Revised Code permits you to follow that plan and gives you power to follow it. The other is your codified ordinances. This actually should inform your codified ordinances as you move forward. So what does it do as that blueprint for the future? Does a number of things. First, it helps identify target areas within the city that you want to see grown or developed or redeveloped because they're undeveloped or otherwise. It helps you identify places to steer public dollars. I know you guys are all in the midst of looking at some of the ARP funding, the CARES Act funding, and obviously the impending infrastructure bill. So it gives you direction on how to invest that to align with some land use decisions. Helps you identify greatest opportunities for development and outlines areas for preservation. So in very simple terms, that's what this document does. In terms of our journey here, we had five phases. The first was preparing for the plan, getting organized, understanding the context, which is some of our technical research. Phase three was community engagement. We're developing, finalizing, and setting up for implementation right now. And another key cornerstone of this process was our project webpage, Perrysburg Tomorrow, which we house information on, posted drafts on, PowerPoints on. So the intention was to have full transparency with the process and provide that gateway to it. I think it's important to remember how we got here. And there's a reason you're going through this process. And that reason is pretty simple when you look at your growth. So this was one of the places that we started this journey with, with our steering committee, which was looking at how you've been growing. And you can see the trajectory there from 2000 to 2020. You've been going at a pretty good clip. You know, I know this as well as you do, growing up here, I've watched the city change quite a bit. And you've had about 26% increase in population. So that's a pretty modest, moderate growth over a 20-year period. So you're lucky to have them, like other places in Ohio that have the reverse trend, which is not a place you want to be. So, you know, one of the things we looked at was what can growth look like in the next 20 years? So if we kind of projected out that trend, and that trend was based on census data, it was actually based on your real building permit data as well. So we feel really confident about those numbers. And we said, if you slowed down growth, you'd be about 25,000 people by 2040. If you continued at a moderate growth rate, your current growth rate would be 28,000. At a higher growth rate, let's say you accelerated at 400 people per year, you'd be over 30,000 as a community. The other thing we looked at, and I think this is really important, is what can you develop? What is developable? So this is land that's undeveloped, it's underutilized, or it's farmland. And, you know, I think that I'd be the first to talk about farmland preservation and the importance of that, but the reality is it gets developed. So we consider that developable in this scenario. And looking at this boundary, and this boundary is your utility service area, your water boundary. So this is areas you can grow into. And we identified about 3,200 acres that is actually developable within this boundary. We dug a little bit deeper to really uncover the story here. We looked at the current zoning in the city and in the surrounding townships. And we said, of all that land that was in that pink, if you developed it, you could accommodate about 7,500 new residents. And that's outright zoning, how it's zoned today, it's permitted to happen if it was developed. And that equates to about 3,100 housing units. So if we look at this a little deeper and we say, okay, if we looked at that high-growth scenario, let's say you grew by 8,000 additional residents for 3,200 households at a high-growth rate, you're completely built out. And that's not an unrealistic scenario, meaning all that land's developed. If you look at the moderate growth rate, 5,000 additional people by 2040, 2,000 new households, you've still consumed a lot of that land. So that's an important piece to really think about, and I think it's the reason that you're undertaking this study. I don't think you had all this data when you started, but you kind of knew. It was our job to really look at it and say, what's the reality there? And so the reality is pretty clear. If you grow moderately or you grow at a higher growth rate, by 2040, for the most part, you could be close to being built out. So you've got to make the best use of what you have. That's what this plan in part is about. So in terms of how we did the engagement and the outreach, just a quick look at the numbers here. We had two community meetings, actually three because we repeated one. We had five stakeholder meetings. We did two community surveys. One was available to anybody in the city. The other was a statistically valid phone survey that we, Aimpoint Research did. I know it's election season, so the same kind of firm that does that type of research did it with us. We recently had two meetings with some representatives from the Heights, and that's generated thousands of ideas that kind of went into this plan. So some highlights from some of that, some of that listening that we did. So if you want to look at the two, we're going to compare the statistically valid survey, which is the graph that's on the left, and the online graph, the online responses is the graph that you'll see on the right. So you'll see those on the next couple of slides. So you'll see the bottom-left-hand corner is actually the question that came with the survey question. The top line is some of our summary of that. So we asked the question, what elements in the community do you believe shape the quality of life in Perrysburg? Schools were number one, followed by safety, the downtown, people, neighborhoods, parks, and so on. And what you'll see as I go through this is that a lot of the online responses start to mirror the statistically valid responses in most cases. So these are the elements that your community is telling you define who you are. We also asked what people thought was the most significant issue facing the city of Perrysburg. Well, interestingly enough, growth was number one, excuse me, which is why we're here, followed by taxes. And same with the online survey growth, taxes kind of top the line there. We also wanted to know if residents were going to continue to remain in Perrysburg over the next couple of years, over the next five years. 89% said yes. Of course, I finally lose my voice when I come to present this to you all. And then why would you not be living in Perrysburg in the next five years? Taxes, personal reasons, you can see the list there of why folks may be choosing to move on. There are a variety of opinions on how Perrysburg should grow. Most believe, at least some of the water and sewer land, it should be conserved. And so this was a big part of the plan. I'll show you kind of how that translates into the plan when you actually start to see it. But how should Perrysburg grow in the next 10 years? Grow outward with annexation with possible, 25%. But the main way that residents felt you should be growing is both within city boundaries and through annexation with possible, at 37%. 19% said don't grow at all, even if it means limiting future tax revenue. And that was an important part of the question, because I know as well as you do, sitting up there, that in a way to maintain your level of service, you have to generate revenue. And the way you generate revenue is through income tax to help fund the city. So there's that balancing act there. We were very pointed on that question. We also asked what percent of water and sewer land, or in this case, the water land, should the water boundary should be conserved. And residents said about 26% to 50% of that land should be protected in some fashion. So in other words, if you're growing outward, find a way to protect some of that land. Growing the economy, developing older commercial areas and expanding housing choices, that's strong community support. So this is how desire for future growth and development should happen. And you'll see at the bottom, five is the dark color, strongly agree, down to three, which is that lighter color. So we need to grow the economy to maintain a healthy tax base and quality community services. That averaged out at about 3.8. We should focus on developing older commercial areas at 4.1. We need to expand housing choices for all ages was a 3.1 as well, 3.1 and 4.1 above that. And then limit growth, keep things the same as they are was a 2.9. So this is kind of what your community is telling you and how you should be growing. So this is a lot of information we had to translate actually into developing the plan. This was really good data for us and was statistically validated, it was part of the plan. In addition to the single family, I think there is some support here from residents to grow what we call the missing middle. So that is not living in an apartment, it's not living in a larger, single-family detached house. Those are the townhomes, those are the condos, those are different types of apartment living, flats, attached units. Essentially, is the type of housing that we forgot about developing for the last 30 years across the board, across the country. And now we're actually catching up. And the reason we're catching up, I have an older presentation on this, is because lifestyles are changing. You guys know this. Demographic trends are changing. It's not necessarily the American dream anymore. So this was an important question to ask, and this is how your community responded. Do you want more or less of this type of housing? So you can see kind of moving from left to right, senior housing being the biggest level of support, single families still has a lot of support here, moderately priced apartments, mixed-use developments, and so on. So there is some desire and interest, and I think understanding that this housing does play a role in your community. Again, developing older commercial areas rose to the top while developing farmland is at the bottom. So the question here was on a scale of zero to 10, where zero is not appropriate at all, and 10 is very appropriate, how appropriate is it for the city to accommodate new development in the future? And so you can see here how there's quite a bit of support to develop older commercial areas in South Boundary, 6.8 and 7.7. And then around downtown was a six and a seven. The Heights was 5.9 and 6.3. Along Route 25 and Franklin Junction was 5.7, 6.2, and so on. Not a lot of support to develop the farmland still. So public input, these were some of the key findings. Summarizing the research from the survey, as well as the community meetings, the stakeholder meetings that we have, here's some of the things that I want to summarize for you. Schools continue to define you. I don't think I need to spend a lot of time on that. Growth and taxes are the biggest challenges facing the city and some of the reasons people would leave. So generating revenue is important. There's a strong desire among residents to improve, not motorized connectivity. I didn't talk about that in the survey, but, you know, from a lifestyle standpoint, from an amenity standpoint, there's a huge gap in opportunity for you to develop that infrastructure here. Now, we heard that. Factors that impact residents' pocketbooks continue to be very important. I think there's a rather balanced opinion on growth. You know, it didn't come across at all, and I was talking to Brody about this before, that you're a no-growth city. I mean, everybody just wants to keep it the way it is and not grow and not change. I can tell you, from working around the Midwest, there are those cities out there. Your community is not telling you that you're one of those. So strong support for preserving land and open space. There's, I think, a favorable attitude toward developing older commercial centers. There's an appetite and an interest and an understanding for a need of range of housing choices. Residents strongly feel there's need for more senior housing. And then growth that generates new tax revenue for the city is a high priority. So that is 12 months and a lot of listening and thousands of ideas condensed down into two slides. So we did learn a lot more than just that, and a lot of that information is outlined within the plan that you can dig into if you'd like. I just tried to pick out some of the bigger trends that I thought were relevant to this discussion today and to what I'm going to talk about, the draft plan. So when we put the plan together, put this framework together, there are really three inputs. The first is the public input. I talked a lot about that. I shared some of those results with you. So that's kind of that intuitive piece. I mean, even though I grew up here and I visit here, my family still lives here, I have moved away. I don't pretend to still live here or own a business here. So, you know, there's a lot of listening that we have to do to understand the context. The second piece is existing conditions, the people, the place, and land. So that's some of that technical information I presented you on the front end of this. There's a lot more technical research that we did as well. So you have the intuitive piece, the technical piece, and then the third piece are best practices. Those are the things that we bring to you that other communities are doing that are like you, that are helping these communities move forward in advance. So at the foundation of this are a series of development principles. They describe your desired outcome in simple terms. What do you want to be? So that was our job to comb through all that and start to summarize that into these statements of intent. So I'm going to show you some slides. I'm not going to read through all the text. I will read through the top, the top line of each one, though. So the first are community spaces. I think there's a strong desire here to create good places for people to gather, socialize, and come together. There's definitely a strong appetite, and understandably so, again, being from here to protect and maintain and promote your small-town feel. There is a desire to conserve the riverfront as well and encourage diversity. So this was something that came up strongly in the discussion as well, through a variety of living and cultural amenity opportunities. Foster creative redevelopment. So I started to share some of those results with you from the survey of how we can redevelop and where, and what type of support you have for your community to do that. The range of housing options, I talked quite about, quite a bit about. Being connected, that's not only physically, but socially, how do you get connected? That was one of the key themes, one of the principles of the plan. Encouraging economic growth. I think that came through pretty strong in the survey results, that there's a desire for that. There's an understanding of that amongst the community, that you need to do that, and that's why you're elected to admit to do that as part of your job. Preserving open spaces, I mean, there was another key theme I shared with you, very strong support to protect open space. Promoting your regional proximity, so where you sit in the region matters. What you look like from the freeways and how do you utilize that land matters. So those are these statements of the intent that then start to inform the actual future land use map and the planning recommendations. So I'm starting to go from up here, right, gather all this data down to here, where you have these statements of intent. That's then going to drag down even further and start to create this future land use map and some of the more detailed recommendations, kind of this reverse funnel that's happening right now. So if you're on Planning Commission or you go to a Planning Commission meeting, you know there's one map and one piece of paper that that group uses more than anything, and that's the future land use map. So anytime there's a development application or annexation, there's a question of what do we, what is this intended for? And that is a, you know, the future land use map is something you can legally make decisions from in Planning Commission. It guides and informs future development applications. It gives directions for how and where to make capital improvements. I talked a little bit about that. I think most important, it sets the expectation for the private sector, which you're all competing for their interest and their dollars, of what you're willing to accept and where. It identifies areas for economic investment. But it's really important, I know for this audience too, that your future land use map is not zoning. It does give you direction if there is a rezoning application for how it should be rezoned. But once you adopt the future land use map, you still have the zoning map, which is law. It gives direction to how you change that zoning map, that is the law, and that's why this map's important. So hopefully that makes that clear. So this is the future land use map as it sits currently. I know it takes a lot of studying to really dig into that and understand everything that goes on in there. I'm going to cover a little bit of it, but more or less, you know, I think there's some things in here that are notable. And that is that, you know, we talked a lot about this idea of conservation. And so for most of the land that you saw in that pink color, the peach color earlier, that's undeveloped, most of that sits in two districts, which is conservation rural and suburban conservation. And what we're saying here is if and when that land gets developed, right, and it would have to likely be rezoned, that there's a desire to conserve that. Now, in this rural conservation, we're saying 50% to 75% of that should be protected as open space. What that does do at the same time is it does maintain the development rights of that owner. So let's say you had 100 acres, you're only developing 50 acres of it, and the rest of it you can develop for housing, and the rest has to be maintained as some assemblage of open space. There are a couple of communities, I'll point down to where I'm from, which is central Ohio, who do this extremely well. Dublin and New Albany are, you know, poster trials of how this has been done. And then connecting all those open spaces for wildlife habitat and both wildlife and human migration. So that's the idea here with these districts. So this is what it'd be a conventional development would look like. You know, we're just making up something here. These are actually our drawings. That's something that's conventional. That's something that's more rural conservation. So this is also best practices of what we're bringing to you guys to make sure that we're doing things innovative and cutting edge. So similarly, you could do a similar scenario if you had multi-family and rural conservation. So these could be townhomes, barn style, what have you. You can protect a lot of open space. And the idea typically is that you're protecting land that has natural amenities and features or good soils. Same thing on the conservation suburban. Again, I'm pointing these out because these are, this is the majority of land that sits within that water district, your water district boundary. This is the majority of what you might see getting developed. So same thing on conservation suburban, it's just a little less aggressive on the protection of open space. Here, we're talking about 25% to 50%. So you're just stepping down, a little bit, a little bit less on the preservation side. And you can see those character images there, what those look like. So as you go through the plan, when I showed you the future land use map, everything has a color. All of those districts then have this accompanying component to it that describes a little bit more detail of what the purpose and intent of that district is. So if I'm on Planning Commission and I have to make a decision, first thing I'm going to do is hit that future land use map. The second thing I'm going to do is go to this character page for that district. That's going to give you a little bit more insight and direction, okay? It also sets you up nicely if and when you did want to, and I would strongly recommend with these two districts, that you do create those zoning districts so they are codified and you can use them. Gives you direction on how to set those up. Remember, none of this could happen without the zoning component happening after the plan. So again, this is the same situation in eventual development, suburban conservation. You can see it's a little bit more spread out than the previous diagram. So, how am I doing? A half hour in, and I'm going to leave another fun part for Tim to talk about, which are our focus areas. And Tim, I think I can probably start to introduce as I can come up here. So we talked a lot about how can you grow? And your city's saying, you know, we really, leadership, we want to see you take the best advantage of the land that you have while carefully growing outward. That's the easiest way I can summarize of what we heard and I think what this plan does. So there are areas within your city that can be redeveloped. So here's the thing. Either you put a plan forward that sets your own vision and you're proactive, so that you're saying to the private sector, this is what we want, this is what we're willing to accept, or you stay in a reactive position, and that's never a good position to be in. Meaning, people are bringing development applications to you, you don't have a program map, you don't have a plan, and then ultimately, you may not have a grounding leg to stand on. So we looked at some of these areas that actually we tested with the public and got support for. If you go back to the survey, we talked about South Boundary, we talked about Downtown, and had pretty good support for looking at those areas for redevelopment. We dug a little bit deeper, sharpened the pencils a little bit more, and gave a little bit more strategic insight into how these areas could be developed. So I have the pleasure of turning this over to Tim. We'll run it about 30 minutes, about 15 minutes to go through these. And Tim's going to talk about these focus areas.
Thank you, Aaron. So the focus areas, as Aaron mentioned, you know, these are, these were sites that were just selected as potential opportunities. This could be any site in particular. It doesn't matter necessarily which ones we did choose. We just looked at a few different areas to say, let's test these principles that we just talked about of how do we not grow outward?
I will say that I hate the last one. Can make it on some case.
Okay. How do we not grow outward into that kind of greenfield zone? And how do we maybe redevelop internally? So, again, these are only concepts. Nothing has been, you know, set in stone on any of these. They're just concepts. These are not proposed developments. Again, these are just concepts. We're growing inward as much as we can, not outward. The land use map is intended to guide and inform the future land use decisions. Again, so these are just guiding principles and to be proactive. And again, not about zoning, but more about creating social and financial value with these concepts. So in this kind of first area, we kind of call this South Downtown area. So in this kind of first area, we kind of call this South Downtown area, this looks like a art diagram almost, but it does have meaning to us in terms of how the roadways, it doesn't look like the pointer is working, but how, there we go, a little bit easier to see. Indiana Avenue here kind of runs through the middle of the, there we go, runs through the middle of the site here, and Louisiana Avenue running north-south, the library here, and the Commodore Building here, and so, you know, how could we reinvent this area? And we, we had a lot of discussion with the community, and input from residents about looking at expanding kind of this downtown zone, so currently, the downtown zone really kind of stops at Third Street or the railroad tracks, and there's a defined difference between, you know, Third Street and the railroad tracks, and as we move south. And so, you know, everybody liking this kind of downtown character of what this is, the angled parking, and more parking, and how could we potentially expand that same character kind of down into the next block, and really connect up and engage the library a lot stronger, and even engaging with the Commodore Building, and looking at some potential future redevelopment within the Commodore site, or within, you know, the site on the other side of the road here. And really, one of the big moves was looking at, you know, currently at the Commodore Building, you know, we've kind of reused this green space at the Commodore Building as this green space, open space, and it's become this kind of park space. It was never really intended that way, it just happened that way. So what if we actually looked at something purposeful, and reconnected this, and said, what if this green space were actually, you know, located up here, more connected to the downtown, and right in the middle of kind of this core of spaces, of civic activity? We've got the City Administration Building over here, the library, the downtown, Commodore, and how does that all start to react and communicate kind of internally around this potential green space, right? And we know that the parking is an issue in the downtown, and so we've actually looked at the idea of, in the future, you may need a parking garage, that might service the courthouse and the civic kind of components, but also the commercial components within the downtown area. And how does this start to then act and react, and reorganize this space? So by, by moving kind of that green space, again, since we've changed slides, this is the library, Commodore, and the downtown. By introducing this green space up here, what we've really done is kind of pushed that green space into the core of the middle, and really refocusing then some opportunities around that on the outside edges, and bringing the core right to the middle. You know, this is an opportunity to, again, be a purposeful green space, not just a remnant of a green space that was left over, but how can we be purposeful about that with kind of activity zone, and trellis, and bandstand, and the festivals, and the fairs, and those things really start to center around this space, and we really get this sense of pride and community, you know, around this green space, that is, again, much more connected to the downtown. So, you know, this was a pretty big move to say, what if we reposition this? But we felt that connecting that down to, you know, really down Louisiana Avenue there, that it really made a lot of sense. Also provided a back walkway kind of connection, up to kind of inside the 5, and kind of that zone up to Second Street, where there could be this pedestrian walking zone on the backside of that, but really kind of surrounding that green space then. So here are a couple of character photos of other cities, similar size, that have these types of amenities, so we can get Hannah here, this kind of community civic pride space, that we talked about that parking garage, and I know while parking garage, you know, it brings up this connotation, but in reality, this building here is actually a parking garage with retail and mixed-use kind of fronted on it, and the parking garage happens within that, and the architectural kind of character and component is just built into that, so it doesn't feel like a obtrusive addition into the downtown. It can feel very much to scale. Other green spaces, again, that kind of encourage outdoor dining, socialization, interaction, activating the streets, and continuing to kind of activate that. So this is the kind of regrowth, or internal growth, that we see happening kind of as an opportunity, again, just one example of an opportunity in that downtown zone. Another one that we looked at was this Boundary Crossing area, so Indiana Avenue here, West Boundary, Route 25 over here, and so you've got this kind of large quadrant here, where the former industrial plant kind of sits back here, and we've got the manufacturing facility here, and you've got the railroad tracks that kind of bisects through it, and we said, you know, at this intersection of Indiana Avenue, really this kind of entrance into the downtown off of Route 25, so anybody coming from, say, Mami, or coming up and wanting to come into the downtown, this is kind of that gateway area. And again, we look at this as an opportunity zone, because, you know, not while they're necessarily looking for property right now to move or to go to, but maybe, you know, in the future, you know, this use has an opportunity to look at an innovation district, and be in a more appropriate place in the future, and we know that the industrial compatibility isn't great next to the residential. So how do we relook at that? And so, as we look at this from a diagram again, we said, if this is Indiana Avenue, and this is kind of that gateway into the downtown area, how could we relook at that, and say, what if we used kind of mixed-use shopping, and that, that really kind of holds this corner together, and really defines that, and makes it a great gateway into downtown Perrysburg? And on the backside of that, how could we be more complimentary of the residential neighborhood on the backside of this? So if we flip that then, where this is Sixth Street and Mulberry, we said, you know, if we have this opportunity to create this green space in here, again, we value that green space, walkability, a chance to be able to get out, there's not a lot of great green space over in this neighborhood, how could we create this green space where the existing residents of Sixth Street and Mulberry could reutilize that, but also as a redevelopment of townhouses that might front along that green space as well? And so this is what that might look like then, and again, in other areas that are similar, where those kind of townhouses, or two-story kind of dense clusters that might front onto that green space, or this mixed-use kind of commercial zone that might be the gateway into that downtown off of Route 25. So, as we looked at these, we looked at some economic, potential economic impacts as well. So the annual property tax revenue, $266,000, a $134,000 increase from the existing condition. It has employment impacts, and so you look at this kind of potential annual value of maybe $410,000. So, again, there's a lot of good character scale, but also has financial impact into the future as well. And so the one other area that we looked at, kind of in the core here, was this kind of South Boundary area, and again, as we look at opportunities to reinvest back into the downtown, we looked at this as an opportunity that, you know, we see this again a lot in Worthington, and Columbus markets, or Cleveland markets, of these kind of shopping centers that were, you know, in that time, there was so much asphalt pavement, and the shopping centers were set back and pushed back, and, you know, really, when we look at development today, it really kind of flips that, and says, we really want to be able to walk up to it, we want to be able to drive up to it. And so if we flipped that, and said, what if we kind of pulled the mixed-use and commercial pieces out to Boundary Street, and out to Louisiana Avenue, put the parking back behind that on either side of it, so that the storefronts are really fronted out onto the streets, so that people from the neighborhood here can walk up to that much easier, you can drive up to it much easier, and you're not staring at a sea of asphalt parking lot, that it is tucked back in behind here. And then we also looked at some residential components, again, because we know the numbers are increasing, these yellow boxes might represent, again, townhouses, those types of things that would create some density back within the downtown area, which would be walkable, obviously walkable to these shopping destinations, parking internally, but, you know, the density of that is much different in looking at redeveloping internally instead of outwardly. So these are, again, are examples, Grand View Heights in Columbus, you know, streetscape, and kind of that corridor of drive-up, walk-up kind of shops, mixed-use development that is happening in a lot of other communities. And so those are some suggestions for those couple of areas. Potential economic impact, again, annual property tax revenue, potentially some $166,000, $465,000 increase, additional jobs, and then, so it has a potential annual revenue of a million dollars. So, again, there's dollars that go along with these plan impacts. It's all right. So, so then the last kind of focus area that we looked at was within the Heights community area here, and as we looked at, you know, around Route 25 here, to get your orientation, Route 25, Rocheville Road, you know, relooking at, you know, how do we work with, within the community boundaries, to, you know, look at creating some infrastructure, and potential for, you know, repurposing, and rekind of allocating some of the green space? We know that, you know, there's a pretty significant open space within there now, where there's empty lots, and other open space that's within the Heights, and if we were to reorganize that, and kind of reshape that, what could this be? And so, some of the principles that we started to look at were saying, well, what if we start by saying, you know, that we look at this kind of center core space as this area, just like we looked at kind of with that Fifth or Sixth Street in Mulberry, a green space that kind of creates a center core, and a place for families to go out to, kids to throw a frisbee, baseball, those types of things, and start to kind of refocus around that green space with, internally in that. And so we see a lot of redevelopment happening that way, and it makes a lot of sense in terms of how it could redevelop around that green space. Really keeping the walkability, and enhancing the walkability of all the streets through here, kind of on this north-south access, enhancing that walkability with sidewalks to connect up to the green space, connecting through with Herald and Lincoln Boulevard on those ends. And so, you know, the yellow boxes would represent this potential for redevelopment of housing stock, that is this kind of small, patterned-style home that fronts onto the green space. We know that that green space increases value, and enhances value for properties as well, so that's kind of a planning principle. And then on this north side, where we start to get into the commercial zone, looking at kind of future development of mixed-use that would support the community here, so we talked about kind of grocery stores, other elements that really support the community, and have a direct access kind of walkability to that, so that development gets supported within that. And then the Heights Community Center is up here, and we were preserving that as well.
Stay back to my perspective, please. So before I jump back, and turn it over to you guys to take questions, I do want to thank Paul, he's been great, he's worked a lot with us, two meetings with him, to talk about this particular component of the plan. We did go back and make a number of adjustments to the plan, based on his feedback, and I think he's talked to a lot of residents. One point, hold on, hold on to your seats here, I gotta go back in time. I go back to the future land use map, which is probably what I should leave up. Almost there. So, one point that he pointed out, and this originally, as you see, was this mixed-use color, and the current draft, it's showing that as a legacy neighborhood, meaning, it's saying, we understand that's a legacy neighborhood, we keep that as a legacy neighborhood, just like all these other colors for Three Meadows, Fort Meigs, et cetera. In other words, they're built out, they should, they're gonna, they have a character, they have to protect and maintain that character. So that was a big change that we made, based on his comment. It does keep the frontage as commercial, that fronts the highway there, but the majority of the neighborhood is identified as a legacy neighborhood, and is maintained as such. So what Tim was talking about was actually saying, if and when there ever was an annexation of this neighborhood into the city, which is a big if and when, I know that's not your intention, it gives you direction on how to make capital improvements and support the neighborhood. So whether the park's that shape, whether it's a triangle, whether it's a square, whether it's a circle, who knows? But having some organizing green space there, and putting capital dollars there, is kind of what the plan's saying. The plan's also saying that you probably should look at enhancing the connections. And so one of the things Tim was talking about with those connections was how to manage traffic in and out of the neighborhood, and the flow of that, because if the frontage continues to be developed, that's going to be increased traffic. You already know there's increased traffic out there. So how do we maintain those curb cuts, and try to eliminate some of that flow through the neighborhood? So those principles, together with the mixed-use along 475, is really intended to support the neighborhood, not do anything detrimental to it, and gives you guys some direction, some map to say, hey, we talked about these capital improvements, maybe we should study them a little bit more, and give some credence to how we should make capital improvements in the neighborhood. Because right now, you're not, because it's not in the city. So I just wanted to put that out there. I know everybody's here, I grew up here, I have lots of friends who live in the Heights, I recognize names on your boards here, went to high school with those people. You know, our intention is only to help the neighborhood, not to do anything other than that. And so that's really what I think that concept plan does. It's up to you guys to say whether or not you think that's an important piece of the plan, and important how it is currently represented. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, that's about a year's worth of work in 40 minutes.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I don't know that there are some council members that have questions here, and Jan see you with your, and first, we'll start with Jan, and we'll kind of bounce around.
I have kind of noticed, and it's been in the news, and I saw some projections from revenues in the cities throughout Ohio are greatly decreased, because there, nobody's going to the office anymore, and how that is going to be an ongoing trend, and I see some of your projections for use in revenues is based upon that. Don't you think COVID has changed that, affected it long-term, because businesses are finding it cheaper to not maintain full offices anymore?
I think that's a really good question, and I think the honest answer is the jury's still out. You know, we follow these trends all the time. I think the central business districts are at places where you're going to see a lot of change, and turnover into more dynamic mixed-use places. I think places like Perrysburg actually could come out being winners in all of that. And we're already seeing that trend, where there's a lot of coworking spaces being developed in these kind of areas. Yes, people want to be at home, and they can work at home, but a lot of people don't want to be at home with that. And so how do you find a flexible workspace, coworking? And so, I don't know, to be honest. I think there's going to be a shift, but I don't think it's going to be a round shift for everybody's working at home from talent.
But I also agree with you, I think it'll affect the larger cities more than the smaller ones.
Yeah, the big central business.
Mark, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do, and I'm going to try to get through the, Aaron, I was with you from the beginning on this, and I want to ask, is this draft that's dated 1014, that is the draft you're asking us to adopt?
Not the most current draft.
That's as written?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to hold your feet to the fire a little bit about adding the fourth focus group, okay? Because I, you know, I participated, and I was part of the community engagement, and I know that, was our last community engagement, that virtual forum on April 8?
I would have to go back more.
I think it relates, was that where we had 35 participants?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and check that date.
Okay. That was well before we ever added this fourth focus area for the Heights, correct?
Correct, yep.
So, that's a problem I had with the community engagement. Had anyone from the Heights known, you know, that we were even considering putting a piece of the township as one of our focus areas, wouldn't we have let those people from that focus area make sure, you know, specifically let them know that we're going to be talking about that area? Because I know we put it on the website, we, we, you know, we advertise everything that we're going to have, but I think everyone assumed it was a city plan, so just city residents were going to be, you know, have input on this, or even why would someone from the township want to have input on it if they weren't told they were going to be? So that's a problem I have. How is it, how did we come up about adding a fourth focus area? Because we never talked about that fourth focus area for the longest time.
We did talk about it in terms of land use, we talked about it in terms of designation.
And land use, as far as, as a focus area, though. I don't think we did. And, and the reason I went through this plan very carefully, okay, if you start with, just starting with the table of contents, the table of contents shows three focus areas, it doesn't mention the Heights at all. Page eight, on the focus area concepts, it references three focus areas, not four. Also on page eight, community engagement, it says, we're going to gain insight into the concerns of the needs of the Perrysburg residents. You know, it just seems like it's focusing on the city of Perrysburg, because this is the city, you know, the city's paying for this, but nobody from the township, I mean, we would have maybe this many participants from them, had we told them that we were going to include them. You know, and in the stats of the community engagements, they're not included in there. Page 29, you know, says we want an affordable and diverse range of housing options. Page 29, you know, says, "We want an affordable and diverse range of housing options that are desired and needed." I don't think we were looking at that that way. Page, now, page 31, they talk about, you talk about the virtual open house. Only three focus areas were discussed in that, in that virtual open house. Page 46, the focus area detail map, does not include the fourth focus area. Page 52, I didn't see the Heights included, are they legacy residential? Is that where we have?
Yep.
I don't see that included in legacy residential map on page 52, unless I'm looking at it wrong. I may have my colors off on that one, but I may be wrong on that one if I have, if the colors wrong.
It's got the draft over here.
Okay, all right, yeah, because the draft was written, all right, my mistake there. Bear with me, please, I want to have this time to do this.
Sure.
Page 66, overview, says there were three primary focus areas, fine. And then, we talk about, page 108, next steps. The Heights isn't included in the next steps. And, you know, you probably, just so you remember, I was always coming up with typos, and this whole thing's about 111 pages, 109 of them, I found two typos, but just in the three pages that included the Heights, I got seven typos. It just looks like it was thrown together. So, I'm just a little disappointed in that, you know?
Well, thank you for your comment, council member.
Yeah, I mean, I think if this, and that's why I carefully asked if this is the draft you want us to adopt exactly as written.
It's a draft, and there's a reason it says draft, because it's still a working draft. I didn't, I didn't follow you carefully to say it's the one you should adopt, because there's a lot of work through the process, through planning commission, through public comment, which we're doing here tonight, that this still maintains a draft until it's actually adopted.
Right.
So, and I think to comment on your main point, which is how do we end up with four? And we did add it at the very end, because we did think it needed, we did need to give it a little more attention, because we did feel it was an extremely important area. If there, if you would like to remove it, I think that's something council has the purview to do, and we can just maintain it as a legacy neighborhood and keep it as such. Or, you can do a lot more outreach and work with the residents and talk to them about how they think it should be developed beyond a legacy neighborhood. There's really two courses of action there. Either, either it can be appropriate depending on the leadership's decision, what to do with that focus area.
I just want to make note, I believe there should be a plan, and I believe it probably should be primary residential. And it was explained to me very well by Brody, that, let's say, someone that lives behind Taco Bell or behind the AAA says, "I want to sell my property," and they find a developer, they work out a deal with a developer, and that developer comes to the city and says, "I'm going to build this commercial building there." Well, if we had a plan already that said, "It's all residential," the city could very well say, "No, you're not going to build that commercial building there, because we have a plan that says this is residential." But I'm defending this plan.
Which is what you have.
But if we don't have a plan of some sort, then they can just negotiate that with the city and say, "Yeah, we want to build this, and we want to annex this in." So, I don't think we should remove the whole plan, but we, it should be, you know, residential, where we want it, should be residential.
But I appreciate the applause, because that was, that's the change that's been made, is to keep it residential.
Yes, and I didn't know quite how to word that until, and I thanked Brody for giving me that example tonight, so, that's all I, sorry.
I got a Joel, you have, or Joel, sorry, Corey.
Wow.
I want to hear about that one.
I'm going to take a minute to gather myself, Aaron.
I need some more coffee.
Please, no one share with my brother the YouTube link to this meeting.
We'll strike this one out.
Aaron, I think you can look out and see one of the main concerns is the Heights. So, you know, one of the slides and one of the principles that's shared in the plan is promoting diversity. And I know we've had experiences in the past that are unpleasant in Perrysburg. We're trying to grow, and we've had community events around those things. So, I think this is a perfect forum for you to kind of address how this plan, because I'm kind of failing to see it, I see it as kind of like a sticker mark, that, hey, we're promoting diversity. How is this plan specifically going to help us promote diversity and inclusion and things like that? Well, I mean, and as the foundation of land use plan isn't your D I cornerstone, right? But it is really important in terms of what types of jobs you're creating, who you're creating them for, what types of housing options you're creating, what's the diversity of housing options, who's living in those places, what, how are you promoting gathering within your community? So, I think from an economic standpoint, in terms of job creation, I think in terms of housing options, and this plan does a lot to introduce and promote a range of housing types, which currently don't exist, as well as social gathering. I think those would be the three things I would point out in terms of promoting diversity within the community. But you have, we have to still maintain that this is a policy guide that's focused specifically on land use. It's not going to answer all those questions, but those are three ways I think it does a pretty good job of doing that. Okay, and I appreciate you answering that, because that's kind of my take, that's not your job with a land use plan is necessarily incorporate it into the culture, but it's provide opportunity to create that diversity. One of the things that we continue to get emails on, it's not necessarily from the Heights community, I think we had an email from Fair Housing today about where's potential growth for affordable housing in the city? Because I don't see that in the, like I- Any of these places where it was identified. Any developer can come in and do a low-income housing tax credit project within these areas that we're showing as developable or for development of the neighborhood. So, the plan isn't going to say, "This is an affordable housing product that goes right here." It says, "Can we create the window for that to occur?" It's up to the private sector to actually come in and do those projects, but are you giving the other opportunity to do that? I think the plan does do that. Okay, and I guess, because you deal with these land use plans more than I do, I review what's put out there, I wasn't part of the steering committee, it wouldn't be wise to encourage or list that in a zoning map, where we're trying to preserve an area for low-income housing or that sort of thing? I'm a believer that you create the opportunity for that to happen and the market responds to that, because it's not the city's job to create low-income housing, it's to create places where it can occur. I think, you know, almost all these focus areas do that, as well as some of the areas that are undeveloped. If it's the city's purview to go deeper and actually identify blocks or areas where you want to see that happen, that's something you could do. I'd probably advise against that. I think that's too prescriptive, and, but it certainly is an option. Okay, yeah, I just want that said out loud, because you're kind of the person that's steering this whole thing, and you have the knowledge of the land use plan, and those are the common questions, so.
Sure.
Just so that people have an open and honest answer about those types of things. But that's all I got.
Thank you, Corey.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for remembering my name, so I only sat next to you for two years now.
Yeah, I know. I've only done that, I think, once or twice, so I apologize. Deborah, you have a few questions?
Thank you so much, President Smith. I have some questions. You mentioned earlier, first, who were the community members that were involved in this? I didn't see any names that were listed. Also, the stakeholders, I didn't see their names listed as well for the plan. And I also have questions about why was this all done online rather than in person with people and planned to be dealt with people in person so they can come in and say what they want to say, get more input from the community? And the other thing that strikes me is about the Heights. Why were they even considered when they are in the township? And we talk about, I keep hearing people talk about diversity. Well, we have diversity already here in the Heights, so why are we trying to reinvent the neighborhood? And we already have it here in the community and have for many years. That's something I think we need to be thinking about.
Sure. I don't think the plan is trying to reinvent the city in any way. I think it's trying to promote it and encourage it. In response to your earlier question, the thing we're doing online, because we did that, we started this when COVID started, and so, there was no opportunity to really meet in person.
Wouldn't it possibly waited, have waited? I mean, the city's paying $80,000 for this plan. I think it could have, so we could have had a lot more input from the community, and I don't feel that we've been able to have that opportunity.
Yeah, and I think that's also when we started, I know council asked us to go the extra step to do the statistically balanced survey because of that, because you wanted to have that level of certainty and extra layer of input. So, that was, you know, another piece that was done to respect the public input, but I've gone through dozens and dozens of projects during the time of COVID and done hundreds of online engagement sessions. I would tell you, scouts on are high in degree of confidence, public engagement has gone up exponentially through online engagement, just because of the convenience factor. So, I'm not discouraged by doing things online. I think every community's different, so if it's something that you guys say, "You know what, we want to have another public meeting," certainly you can have another public meeting to get input on this, and you can do it in person. But I know that, you know, planning's been happening for the last 24 months, 36 months, pretty successfully with online participation.
One thing that I did notice, because I did watch your recorded meetings that were online, what I did notice were several of the people that were voting were somehow connected to Columbus, your Columbus firms that are down there, rather than the people from here. Saw very few people that were from this area that were actually, from Perrysburg proper, that were actually voting on this.
I don't know how you would have seen that.
Well, I looked up the names and researched them all, and they all, almost the majority of them came from Columbus firms.
How about Columbus firms be logging into your public meeting, voting up there?
Well, that's what I found.
Unless it was one of our staff members who votes just to make sure that everything's happening?
But that's my point. It should be the public that should be having to say, not individuals out of Columbus telling us what we're going to have in our community.
Yeah, I don't, that's a new one for me, I have no idea about that.
That's what I had, I had noticed that.
I'd love to talk to you about that, if you have those names, I'd love to research with you, because I've never in my 20-plus years-
The majority of them were from OHM or somehow connected to-
Why don't we get the names and hopefully see if we got them?
Yeah, and I have somebody running back of show for us when we're doing that, so it's very possible that's who you saw. And I haven't verified those names.
I just happen to know the forum I participated in with Becky and Mark was all Perrysburg people except for the two moderators.
With all of them?
We're all Perrysburg people except for the two moderators.
Yeah, and that's what I would think was happening.
That's what I watched, I watched the recorded meetings, that's what I saw, because I watched it a couple of different times just to see, and that's what I had seen.
Well, you can't see who's actually going in there.
Well, I saw the names, well, I mean, it wasn't hard to find out.
We're also all on the screen at the same time, so we're part of the meeting when that's happening, but we can talk, we can talk about that. And then, your last comment about, you know, the committee members, people are allowed to participate in this process anonymously. So, not everybody who does an online survey or participates in a stakeholder meeting or even come to a public meeting, they can use a Jane Doe, and that's their purview to do that. So, we don't record every name that provides a comment through this process. Actually, we respect the idea that people can participate anonymously, because sometimes they feel more comfortable doing that.
Good question, if I may. So, I believe you verbally changed the plan from a mixed-use for the Heights to a legacy residential as a recommendation.
Correct.
So, what is going to stop the continued infringement of the commercial space into the Heights? I mean, how, not stop it or slow it down, how do we preserve the residential legacy? Because there were, there were reasons why you were suggesting mixed use, which was to contain commercial growth, right? Kind of? How do we do that with a residential legacy?
Well, the way you do that is when you adopt a future land use plan that says that's what your future designation could and should be, and then, if and when that, if and when that land gets annexed into the city, and if and when they try to rezone it, your first direction would be to go to this plan and say, "We've identified this area as a legacy neighborhood." That's what we should maintain as the guide for the rezoning.
So, since we have no plan to annex, this would be sustained or stopped through rezoning? Correct? In terms of the commercial development?
I guess I'm trying to follow your question.
Right.
You don't, yeah, you can't.
So, since we don't plan on annexing, the only other way to contain or refrain the commercial growth is through the zoning process, correct?
The annexation process and then the zoning process. The way that it would be developed today would be, that applicant would have to go to the township, the township would have to have a plan, and they'd have to follow that plan while the Heights gets developed. Because you don't have control over that right now.
Correct.
So, it's just an if and when, if and when this does get annexed in the city, and the reason we looked at the Heights is because we looked at everything in the water service boundary. So, we didn't exclude any component of the service boundary for any reason, we included all of it, because that's reasonably what you can serve and you can annex into. So, you notice everything has a color inside that boundary?
Mr. Parthi, do you have a?
I was just thinking, Aaron, I know we talked about this at the steering committee, help me understand, I'm referring to South Downtown now, the main part, the initial downtown, which currently has Perry's Landing and some other businesses. I started with it at the committee, and I think I got over it then. Help me understand again, why is that proper element of our land use plan if it's not really realistic? I mean, much like Heights, we're not going to take Perry's Landing, I am not going to buy it or buy all those businesses. So, if the community all said, and I think most everyone on the steering committee looked at it and said, "Yeah, that's great, but how do we ever get there, or are we just, in effect, punning at doing any planning for that area by adopting what may be an unrealistic vision?"
Well, first, I don't, I don't think it's an unrealistic vision. You know, we could go all around the region, and we could find examples of how these projects have taken shape. Every- You can hear it, so we can hear you. Sure. Every building starts to have a lifespan, you know? When we looked at South Boundary, again, I grew up shopping at Foodtown, putting my bottles on the cart, okay? These boxes have a lifespan. Perry's Landing is going to have a lifespan, and the number one way you're going to realize something like that happening is adopting a plan, putting a mixed-use zoning designation on it to allow the private sector to see the vision and your willingness to see redevelopment there. You've seen another number of redevelopment projects happening around the downtown already. I don't think it's unreasonable for you to think that something, the private sector wouldn't do something here as well. So, the plan's really saying, what is your vision, what would you be willing to accept, and how might you go back and look at your zoning code to amend it, to allow this type of reinvestment to happen? You guys know as well as I do, there's a lot of things that have to happen. You have to update your code. Somebody has to be willing to initiate a rezoning process, that has to happen. You have to have an investor, you have to have a major site plan approval, I mean, there's a lot of steps that have to happen. The city can play a role in that through your CIC, through putting colors and tax increment financing on the property to help contain and facilitate that. What the plan says is, you know, what could be the vision for that area? And that's simply what that concept does, starts to illustrate a vision. So, at the end of the day, in any of these focus area concepts, it's not going to look like that when it happens. It's just kind of getting the flywheel turning, it's starting to illustrate some semblance of a vision for what could be. Just to kind of build off that, because to me, when you look at that, I kind of agree with Parthi on that. When we have that green space right across the road, or catty corner to that, what goes into the decision not to identify that as a part of the area? I know, because it shows development on that area. But why not use the green space that's light or development potentially? Tim talked a little bit about that. The first and foremost, again, I come to here some early days, I do all the things, and I come to visit family. We don't want to see people having to cross that road to get to the green space. Second, as more things happen in and around downtown, there's continued, I haven't been into a downtown where nobody told me there wasn't a parking problem, okay? And I know that at peak hour, there are challenges and pockets where you have parking. So, if you can solve the parking problem, we've identified a way to solve that and then marry that up to the green space where you're going to see the most activity. Third point was, we're trying to keep that activation closer to the central business district and the core to support those storefronts with foot traffic. So, there's a lot of reasons why I think that could make sense. Something like that is going to continue to need a lot of planning and discussion, right? The plan's giving you the direction to continue to have that planning and discussion, but I think safety, parking, and continue to promote the economic health of your downtown- But I think safety, parking, and continue to promote the economic health of your downtown is why we thought that foot would make a lot of sense. And as Tim pointed out, you know, we're, you're, we're, I still feel like I'm a member of the committee, using that green space as, it's a de facto green space. It just happened, but it wasn't intentional. How do you create an intentional green space that has electric, that has water, that has the van shell, that has the infrastructure that can really facilitate a lot of things I know the community wants to do?
A follow-up on that, I know what the, I actually appreciate your question, Corey, because I was going to ask something similar. Just kind of continuing on with that, you know, with these focus groups and trying to, not focus group, these focus areas and trying to identify some different options. Because we know that not everything is going to change immediately within these focus groups. Is there things that we should be focusing primarily as something that should be identified as this is the first step you should be taking no matter what change comes first? Do you kind of follow what I'm? So for instance, you know, we talked about that park there where Perry's Landing would be. What happens if we find that maybe a different area within that focus group maybe become available sooner? Would it make more sense? I'm going to throw something out, let's say the parking lot, instead of taking that green space from the schools, turn that into the parking lot for people to go to the library and turn the parking lot and submit the adjacent property next to that into that green space? Is there some ways to identify some different options within those focus areas, say, you know, this is something you should be focusing on in here as a priority one, two, three or four?
I think each one of these focus areas could use a lot more analysis and study. And that typically would happen in the process. You'd go back and do a much more detailed plan and look at these. Development Committee, I know you have a CIC. The CIC is designed to take on projects like this and work with the city to facilitate that development. So there's just so many steps that could go into that. What incentives are you willing to put in place on those to actually attract investment? Whether it's a CRA or a TIP or some type of new community authority? So all those things have to happen. We didn't go to the 10,000-foot level with this effort, but you need to get there. So again, this starts the conversation, starts the vision for you to get to that next level. My recommendation would be on some of these, like South Boundary, like Downtown, that you actually initiate that next step, which is doing a detailed area plan using the CIC. There's so many tools that, you know, we could talk about. And there's so many different steps you could take to do them.
Because one of the things that is actually one of the areas that could be a prime focus point sooner than later is the wholesale plant there on Sixth Street. And that's one that if you look on that actual focus area, the south side, I mean, you look at the map, you think north, but the south side of the railroad tracks is showing there and then into an open park and residential. If something like that was to become available, what we're seeing right now is a potential option to try to attract some investments. Do we continue to go forward with it broken up in piecemeal or is it just?
I think, you know, on that property in particular, I think the CIC is the tool I would look to. You know, I think you start talking to the owners and the other investors. And what's the difference today versus what we saw 20 years ago is that the cities are not sitting back and say, well, it's not our job to help facilitate growth and development. We're going to manage it, right? We're going to regulate it. But the cities that are quote unquote winning and getting the type of investment they want to see, we're actually in the trenches helping facilitate that. So I think it's, that's really the next step there, is are you facilitating it? Are you talking to the owners? Are you acquiring property or using your CIC? Are you putting the development agreements together? Are you putting developer RFPs out on the street to attract that investment to those places? Do you have a couple of these areas and we've identified them where I really think that new investment would really benefit the city? We've done the back of the envelope calculations on revenue generation and that was intentional to say, look, these are areas that there's untapped potential and unrealized revenue in them for the city.
And there may be others, right? I mean, these were just a couple of like the things, right? I think what you said, you know, was about this virtual run along. This is about this five years, 10 years down the road, right? If somebody says, hey, I want to rezone this property in the future, surely kind of fuel and fight to say, oh, we have this vision, right? And this is how we, you know, we don't want to talk about hours, we want to have feedback and a couple of that, this is the vision for that. So persons set that home or, no, 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 they don't want to do that type of, more suburban law, those types of things. Then we come back and do this type of stuff. So that's my view, kind of, you can do.
Any other additional questions from any council members up here?
Well, I have one thought. Couple of things. I had asked earlier about who the committee members were and I didn't hear names. If I'm going to share my names with you, I would hope that you could share them with me. And also the stakeholders involved, I'd like to have those names as well, if you had mentioned.
Yeah, the committee members are in the plan, they're listed on the second page.
Okay, the stakeholders?
We can go back and look at the stakeholders that we talked to as well.
That would be great.
But I can't, I don't have names for everybody who participated in public meetings and surveys and that type of thing.
I would also suggest, this is my opinion, but I would suggest that the Heights Plan B thought just gotten rid of in general, period. I don't think it makes sense. They are in the township. I think we need to leave them alone. They have a lot of vibrancy and they go back generations, I believe, to the 1920s. And if you want to talk about diversity, well, you already have it.
Sure.
So I don't think we need to be reinventing the wheel, so to speak.
Absolutely. And if that's the purview of council, then we just leave it a legacy neighborhood and there's no more detail on it and it just, it's just there.
Thank you very much for your time. I know we had some time set aside for some public comments. We have seven names here. If anybody who's listed on here does not want to come up, please let me know. We are definitely crunch for time. We're already about 17 minutes over, so we do have a two-minute time limit. If you can definitely stay under that, please do. If not, we will ask you to step aside. So I'll start with the first name on the list here. Paul Blazas, if you don't mind stepping up. And I'm going to be starting a timer as soon as you start to speak.
Thanks very much, and I'll try to keep this short. The only person here, Paul Blazas, 503 West Front Street. The only person here who probably will remember this is Tim McCarthy. But in 1993, the city of Perrysburg undertook a comprehensive land use plan. And in that plan, they extensively planned for how the Route 25 corridor should be developed. Most of that land, including the area that's now Love's Commons and Perrysburg Heights and like most of the rest of it was not yet in the city of Perrysburg. And what was proposed by the planning director at the time was that that entire area be developed with light industrial uses. And that the entire areas surrounding Perrysburg Heights, literally every square inch, was proposed to be developed as light industrial. So when that was proposed, and once members of the Perrysburg Heights community found out about it, as you can imagine, there was an avalanche of criticism. And it resulted in a pretty extensive discussions with members of council and Tim McCarthy played an integral role in that. And the plan that eventually emerged was one that did away with the light industrial and instead provided for development of residential housing along the office and retail as the compromise. And there were assurances that Perrysburg Heights would remain residential as it was. And what I have here is a partial copy of the 1993 plan, which talks about Perrysburg Heights. And it specifies that Perrysburg Heights will be single-family residential housing. And it also specifies that there will be limited flexibility.
Paul, we had two minutes just went off.
That there will be limited flexibility in altering that zoning. Those were the commitments that were made to us in 1993. Now you fast forward to.
Thank you, Paul. We really need to keep moving on the two-minute time.
Is there anybody else on that list?
We have Anita Sanchez, Juan Arteaga.
No, but I wasn't at the previous meeting, so I think I should get four minutes because I wasn't at the one.
We are doing the two-minute time limit because this, we are already working over.
If you have somewhere to go, leave, but the rest of these people here really need to have a voice.
We have plenty of opportunities that are going to be coming even after this meeting.
Great.
We still have city council meeting that's going to be occurring immediately afterwards as well. We do have planning and zoning committee that's going to be meeting that's going to have a more open opportunity for.
Well, get your minutes up, so let's just finish so I can.
We're going to have more opportunity for additional conversation.
You're speaking of both time talking than hearing, so you just took away from Paul.
I, you know, I.
I'll answer your question.
If I can just make one comment, I understood that the purpose of today was to bring Aaron and Tim in to talk about their plan and to give us an opportunity to address those issues. And we tried to schedule it around my availability so I could be here because I'm most familiar with it. And I'm sorry, but I understand the need for brevity, but two minutes really doesn't allow.
There's going to be a lot of opportunities to continue to speak, especially when you go to planning and zoning committee. But thank you, Paul. Paul, would you like that to be just a council member?
Yeah.
We'll do that, okay.
Anita Sanchez, 32265 Harold Street, Perrysburg Heights, Perrysburg, Ohio, 43551. I missed the first ones because I was out of town, but I never thought in my lifetime that I would be standing in front of the city of Perrysburg, dealing with the township of Perrysburg issue on eliminating 79 families' homes in Perrysburg Heights by this group and this report you paid $80,000 for to tell us that we need green space in the center of our community to put roundabouts. And you guys already have Fort Meigs with a lighted intersection, so their plans are already obsolete. Harold Street can't go all the way through because you guys already closed that off on 25. So there's a lot, yes, that has to be redone. We want to preserve our community. We have all the diversity that we need. I just think some people need to look at what do they think diversity and culture looks This is what it looks like. We don't want to be included in this study. We want the community to remain as is. Go back and do a study on how many individuals currently that are residents are senior citizens and refocus the affordable housing in the community. Also look at the next report or study that they bring to you. How much is the affordable housing going to do for the revenue of the city? Do you really, are you really looking for that? I love how you guys talked about the city and how the difference between where the green space would be and moving it, you know, closer to downtown. And his concern was, the concern for families to walk across Indiana, but yet the walkability plan to walk across State Route 25 for the residents of the Heights to go into Love's Commons was a go for it.
All right, thank you very much.
There's my two minutes.
Thank you. Juan, if you'd like to.
I'm Juan Arteaga, and I'm one of the board members at the Perrysburg Heights. In looking at the plan, how we were designed and what they're calling for, it makes you wonder, where is the 40% of the people that you would have to move from the purple area there are going to go in order to have this green space that we're talking about? It also says, you're also saying that in order to stay in a healthy budget, 46% would be the bed tax base. In the plan, you also are talking about 14% of the development that should be within the city and 5.9% in the Heights. So again, we go back. What are you going to develop in that green space and where are you going to put your people at? We also have seniors that based on this plan, you're talking about people that are making $50,000 a year. About half of the residents in the Heights are seniors, retired, that are making $50,000 a year. From what I see, it's just nothing more than dollars and cents in what this plan is talking about. We are a diversified community, the only one in the area where you can go. We have a community center where we distribute to the needy. And that's the, probably one of the, for a community that is low income, we provide a lot of services, education for the kids, food distribution for the needy. And we also help as individuals, one another when we can. And that's one thing that we don't have within our city.
Thank you, Juan. Is it Bob Black? Is it Bob Black? Sorry, I can't read the handwriting. Roachin Road? Okay, thank you. Alia? Sorry, someone signed over your name.
I live at 25614 Broad Street. The only thing I would like to mention to you is that I don't agree with the fact that the city doesn't contribute to diversity inclusion. I believe that local, state and national governments should always be on diversity inclusion and be the drivers, especially at the local level, because that's where we're going to start seeing change in the nation. We have to start it locally. Two, the other thing is, is that while the plan is just a plan, it's kind of a slap in the residents' face in the sense of, because we're not annexed to be the city. And I think that's where a lot of that emotion's coming from, and I'm sure you all understand that. So I think what we need to do is we need to be just a little more sensitive on how we say those things. I think also the last thing I want you to do is think individually of the community that you represent, the companies you work for, what their visions are, what their missions are. Because I know the company that I work for is 100% on diversity inclusion, low-income family, trying to evolve that. And all this stuff about comparing it to Grandview and New Albany and Dublin, I lived in Columbus for 16 years. None of those communities, unless you're comparing Toledo to Columbus, we should not even be having that. It's not going to help you guys as a city either. The city enjoys being a small community. The township enjoys being a small community. We already have a problem within our school systems of being able to house all those students. How are we going to do the due diligence as a small local community with plans that are building huge, you know, commercial-type revenue? We really need to think about that. And the last part to that is, we are still not the city. We should never be a part of this conversation.
Next, I have, it's a signature and it looks like Brad, I'm not sure, is the last name Alt, maybe? Paul, 12304 Roosevelt?
No.
Okay. And then finally, we have Daniel Bergard.
Hi, I'm going to pass. Roll your call.
All right, thank you. That's everything for the public comment. Thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
I take one of your calls. I literally hear a 15-minute thing and I press the comment.
I don't, it's, council has any issues with that?
I mean, hold on now.
I don't think anyone has any issues.
I have no issue with it. In fact, I was also going to ask if Aaron, if any of those questions were directed to the consultants that are here, maybe they can have answers for you if they want to address any of those questions. Because it's not just, speaking to us, they're our guests here. here, if you want to speak to them as well.
We can definitely get some of those answers and hopefully bring it back to the Plan and Zoning Committee.
Well, but he's here now.
If you want to go up there, please say your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
But if you want.
Hi, my name is Jason, I live at 12336 Lincoln, or I'm sorry, that's my mom, 25842 Apex, right across from the center. I've lived there for almost 15 years now. I love this place, I love this community, always have been living in Perrysburg almost my whole life. And one of the things that we used to be able to do is walk down the street. There'd be people walking around all the time, you'd see all your neighbors, you'd say hi, we knew everybody. You can't walk the streets anymore. Because of all the businesses and stuff that's been around here, nobody goes 225 to go around, they go through the Heights. So, my specific plan is, I think we should be on a plan. Because if we're not, then that leaves it wide open of being screwed by somebody else in 10, 15 years. I think we should lay out a plan that is responsible and respectful and uses the land and things properly. A, not in rehoming anybody, but how about giving us the proper services that we should have had to begin with? This neighborhood's been built backwards, it started with houses, and then led to infrastructure, and then streets. How about we go back through and lay the streets a little bit straighter, move the things so that people can drive down the road right, and people can walk and enjoy things, give little tiny curbs, little itty-bitty curbs, just so we have decent curbs and we can have proper runoff and proper drainage. I live on a side that has a drain, I also have a ditch right behind my house. I'm fine. Everybody on the other side of the street, they have to use boats to get out to their darn cars, because it floods so darn much. And all it takes is just a little bit of infrastructure help to help that. We could put balustrades on certain intersections, there's four intersections that eliminate the completely through, so that if someone does want to come to our neighborhood, they come for a purpose. And they're there to see the people that are there, and they're not driving through at 50 miles an hour. Because every morning at school time is when all those jobs are releasing, and they come going through the neighborhood 40, 50 miles an hour, we got kids sitting out at bus stops. It's ridiculous. I count.
Because if you want Plan Zoning, we'll have a, what's the next Plan Zoning Committee meeting?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. You have plenty of time potentially to bring this over, this will give us time to digest this as well, for the committee to look at this and to have those conversations, so.
Okay.
So, thank you very much. So, thank you, everyone, for coming out. If there is no objections, I will go ahead and adjourn. Harry Nun, we are adjourned.
I'll talk to you, Stan.